All right, it's time for the Voodoo Chef Podcast, where we will discuss all things voodoo from the Voodoo Studios located right here in beautiful Tampa, Florida. So to all my booties out there, if you're looking for nothing but a good time, this is the place to be. Call your friends, knock on the neighbor's door and let them know it's time to party like a rock star for the next hour. Join me and my guests and learn to voodoo like we do as we discuss our faves and the voodoo that we use. I'll put our guests on the spot as we ask for their top three and make sure and listen as we discuss some of our favorite war stories from the kitchens we've worked in. Sit back, grab a tall glass of your favorite libation and enjoy this episode of the Voodoo Chef Podcast.
What's going on booties? It's a special podcast and I want to preface, there's a lot of things going on out there, a lot of social media activity. And I want to just first say, you know, I do what I do for the community and I don't have any bones about it. I go to work every day and I love my job and I love working with students and that's what we do. If you want to check my educational accolades and performance, just Google, hit a Google and check out, you know, the difference that we've been trying to make for the past 24 years. You know, we're in uncharted territory and we've got a lot of things that are changing our world right now. And there's a lot of conversations about going back to school. You know, I've made some comments out there and, and you know, I believe we need to be face to face with these kids. That's how I feel. And I know there's people that disagree. And that's the beauty of, of our society and what we do. We can voice our opinions and disagree, but still have conversations about it. I'm not the guy that's going to take my ball and go home. I'd rather sit and talk with you about it and hopefully find some solutions. We're very fortunate today, on very such short notice to have had the Honorable Cindy Stewart, join us for some conversation and she's joining the podcast right now. As she's coming in, I will tell you Cindy has been an advocate of career and tech programs for years, like mine and other programs across the, across Hillsborough County. She's been a huge supporter of education at all levels. I know she answers every text, every phone call, every email I send. Whether it's about a school in her district, out of her district, it doesn't matter. She's an advocate for students. And that's why I love and support Cindy Stewart. You know, I know, I know other people have done the same and, and now we're at a crossroads here where we've got some challenges in our district. And yesterday was a pretty tough board meeting and some decisions that I feel are widening the gap that already exists in our, in our educational world and, and teachers out there. Cindy, thanks for joining the podcast.
Thanks for having me.
You know, I was, I was briefly letting, you know, everybody watches the Voodoo Chef Podcast and, and you know, it's normally fun and games and having a great time.
I know, I've, I've watched.
But you notice, um, you know, we, we put on, we put on the shirt today, you know, we got to dress, you know, this is dressed up for the Voodoo Chef. But, uh, you know, I follow the board meeting. Everybody knows that I don't hold my tongue and I speak my opinions, but I try to do so with the understanding that I'm okay if someone's on the other side and doesn't agree. But let's get together and talk about it. And you and I have always been able to do that. You're a huge supporter of the good things that we do, but, but you're not afraid to call me out when you think it's incorrect or wrong. And, and we have conversations about it and it's not like we walk away upset or mad at each other. And I think the phrase I used, you know, I don't take my ball and go home. We have conversations and I always appreciate that about you. So.
We usually go to lunch.
What's that?
We usually go to lunch.
Exactly. And that, that's, that's okay. You know, I put together a big laundry list of things that I wanted to talk about, but it all boils down to one, one thing. And you know, yesterday's board meeting, there was a, a vote that the board kind of, you know, pushed through and voted on that had us going to e-learning for the first four weeks. And, and I got, uh, it got a lot of, it caused a lot of social media attention and, and I wasn't for that. I teach a career and tech ed program. You know, I was K-12 for 20 years and now I'm at the, the post-secondary. Our students were teaching culinary, going online. I became the guy that I made fun of. And, and not to mention the fact that, you know, the benefits of education, like someone quoted to me in one of my conversations goes beyond the intellect and it also reinforces the importance of the social, the emotional and the mental growth of children. And we're missing out on that. And so I've been, you know, very open about how I feel about that. Last night we voted to go to e-learning for four weeks and a lot of people were just still in an uproar, but it all boils down to, no matter how long my notes were, you and I had briefly talked about this and it was the executive order from the governor. Can you educate us on that executive order and how that's driving what's taking place right now?
Right. So, um, back in, I guess it was early, early July, early to mid-July. And I don't have, I could have the date wrong. I don't remember what exact date the executive order came down. But there was an executive order from the commissioner and not from the governor, but from the commissioner and the Department of Education, which is unusual because normally executive orders come from the governor's office and not from the commissioner. So it was unusual to get that. And we had been talking about plans. So March happened, we shut down. No one had any idea how long that was going to last. We rescheduled graduations. We went to e-learning for the rest of the year. We thought we were going to be able to have graduations. As we got closer and closer, we realized the logistics of having graduations was going to be difficult. Cancelled graduations, then started to realize we were going to have to start planning for the opening of school, realizing we were getting pretty far into summer and where the COVID numbers were and what was being reported. And then the executive order came down. That kind of shifted everyone in the state's ability to really be creative and to really find ways that we could accommodate children without, you know, ignoring the executive order. And the, the executive order is very clear. There's just, there's a couple of things that it states that you have to do. And one is open schools by August 31st. So there was no wiggle room for us to move much past that. Most districts have moved to either that date or just prior to that date. The other thing that it does is it specifically states brick and mortar must be open five days a week. And it is, there's, there's a line in there. I can pull it up and get it to you and for your viewers, but there's a line in there and it, and it's not just brick and mortar for a certain select number of kids. Brick and mortar must be available to all children five days a week if they want it. So that handcuffs us a lot because we can't, um, at that point, you can't say only certain kids are going to go and only other kids are not going to go, or you know, we're going to split the baby and some people want to choose and some people don't. We couldn't really entertain that. The other thing that it talks about or that we talked about was how do you provide services to kids who don't have access? So they, they, they talked about in the executive order, brick and mortar and virtual. So we have Hillsborough Virtual and there's also a Florida Virtual Program, but really anything in between districts could come up with on their own, but it was up to the districts to manage that. The, the governor has said that there's flexibility. The commissioner has said that there's flexibility, but I don't believe that there's enough flexibility that superintendents are going out on a limb and saying, we're not going to open. There's three districts that are not opening, um, brick and mortar and that's, they're all in South Florida and they're all still in phase one of this. They have a little more, a little, a little more to stand behind. The executive order specifically states the only way to not open brick and mortar is if your department of health deems that it's not safe. Well, you saw yesterday, our department of health was not going to go on the record and say that it was not safe for us to open. So that puts the district and the board in a really weird place when you've got six other medical professionals sitting in front of you and then your department of health and six people say it's not safe to open and the department of health won't commit. A lot of people have been questioning too, what, why didn't we develop a hybrid model? Well, it doesn't fit in the executive order. And in developing a hybrid model, whether that's half e-learning and half people coming to brick and mortar is very, you know yourself, Eric, you've taught high school. It's very difficult to manage. How many teachers are going to do e-learning and how many teachers are going to be in a school? And how many kids? And matching that up is, it's like spaghetti models for a hurricane. So that was the next challenge is trying to make that happen.
You're, you're like hitting so many things. You know, you gotta remember, we're talking to the booties out there.
I know.
You gotta break it down.
I, I, so, so for example.
Well, I'd like to go back if we could.
Oh, go ahead. We can go back.
Well, you know, we gotta chunk it out, you know, it's the educator in me. Let's chunk this out. So I want to go back to, to where you, where it all started, March 13th, because that's where you picked up. That's where you started your story. First and foremost, nobody knew this was happening. Nobody saw it was coming. We could not have predicted this. No matter what anybody says, all the conspiracy theories out there, those are fun to play with and talk about. But the reality is this is, this is uncharted waters for us. And you know, for you guys, and plus we're changing administrations and, and God bless, God bless our superintendent, you know. Wow. That's all I'm going to say. And at least the board has been together for some time. But we had to transition and flex and we did so, I think in a very good way. And, and from my standpoint as an educator, uh, you know, you, you made it very easy for us to flex and you gave us the time to work. You gave us paid time to make that transition. And, and then, you know, I'm going to say we all did our best. I'm not going to say we did an amazing job. I can't do that. But we all did our best.
The closest we come to this is closing for a hurricane. I mean, that's the closest that we come to something like this. And, and honestly, being closed for a week is the most that we've done and we've never instituted learning during that time.
This far surpasses that. And, and so, so you know, let's just give credit. I commend you and all, everybody else that's in our leadership. Thank you. You did an amazing job. And, and I think everybody would agree on that and everybody was excited and happy. And then we started moving forward and we went that entire last quarter online. And of course, we're talking about K-12, brick and mortar now. So, so we, we went into the summer and everybody got a sigh of relief. Oh my God, thank you. We could sit and breathe. And we really didn't know how long this was going to go on and we really couldn't plan. So the only plan was to continue as we normally would during the summer until things continued on and the shakeup started. And that's when it all started and the executive orders came out. So now we're at a point where executive orders came out and you, and I mean, I say you, I mean, the superintendent, the staff, the leadership had to create this plan to get us back in the buildings.
Right. And let's be clear, let's back that up. The superintendent, his staff had to create the plan. The board does not sit in a room and create a plan. And we can push ideas to the superintendent. We can suggest things to him. We can give him ideas that our constituents have, our other electeds have, but it is not the board's role to sit and create these plans because frankly, we could create wonderful plans or crazy plans that he's never going to be able to implement. So he's got to be able to weigh the cost, the implementation, whether or not he has the staff to do what he needs to do. And that is his job. It's not the board's job or role to implement things or to come up with alternative plans. So I just want to clear that that is not our role.
That's why we pay this young man the money we pay him. And that's why our elected officials are members of the community who basically donate their time. Because let's be honest, your salaries, your salaries, public record, all of the instructors in Hillsborough County, I believe are at a rate of pay higher than a school board member. So you're, you're taking your time and you're doing this and I, I am grateful for that. And I hope you know that as all other board members, even though we don't always agree on the direction, but that's why you're the elected official and I'm the guy that goes and votes. So, um, and I also want to go back and I want to throw big shout outs to, to, you know, Farkas came on the board meeting yesterday talking about all the feeding programs that we did during that time. An amazing job. Let's, uh, let's give credit where credit is due. All of the student nutrition service workers were in the buildings. All of them were continuing to work, frontline workers. We forgot about those when we were talking about all of the, you know, the healthcare profession and all those frontline workers. Our, our custodial staffs were still in the building, cleaning the buildings, helping.
Transportation delivered food.
Transportation delivering foods. Um, you know, these people have never left work. And, and we, and, and we need to commend them. And I'd like.
A lot of people at the district level that have never stopped working. They've never stopped going into the office even. And I think people have forgotten that there's quite a few people that have never, you know, summer came and went. And there's a lot of people who still work. They didn't take vacation. A lot of people didn't take, they couldn't take vacation. So there's a lot of people who have continued to work on, on the issues and, and what we're struggling with. And you're right, bringing in a new superintendent, as literally Jeff Akins left the building on March 13th. I was there and we shut down that day and we had a new superintendent takeover and we had, you know, all of this stuff. And I feel for all of the superintendents across, across the nation actually, that are dealing with the things that they're dealing with. And, and no one has a book, a playbook, and no one has the answers. And all of my colleagues across the state and across the nation are all struggling with the same issues. Some at greater extents than others.
Well, you compared this to a hurricane. In Hillsborough County, we've done that before. We have some semblance of how to handle that. Nobody has ever done what we're doing before. I mean, COVID wasn't a thing. So, uh, so now we get to this executive order because let's be real. Myself, I've seen students who are slipping into, uh, I hate using the word depression, but they're off of their routine. They're not in the normal and it is truly affecting them. In the board meeting, we talked about those cases of no buenos, no goodies that are happening and increasing because students have idle time on their hands. We need that social, we need that, that, uh, that adult student interaction. You know, I was in K-12, K-12 is a tough place to work. You know, we're not just instructors. We're mentors. Sometimes, you know, you're not the parent. Don't talk to them like a parent. But sometimes we're the parent. Sometimes we're the best friend. Sometimes we're the counselor. I mean, we play every role there is. And that makes it tough. But students also need that. And that's why great teachers can play all those roles in a professional manner. And we need to get back to that, in my opinion. Now, one thing, when this all started, before we voted in the plan, a lot of conversations were happening about first nine online. I went straight out and said, I'm not for that. And I said it like only I can. And you very politely said, you know, chef, we need to think about the safety of our students and our population. And, and I agree with that. But we need to think about it holistically too. So then the executive, then we pass our plan, which doesn't say anything about first nine online. So correct me if I'm wrong. Once the board collectively as a whole approved that plan, it's kind of technically off the table. Am I wrong?
So technically, um, what the board could do as of yesterday was we could delay the implementation of the plan. That's really all we could do. The only other thing that we could have done would have been to change the start date of school because we do have the authority to change the calendar. But that would have just delayed everything, um, for another few weeks.
According to the order is we had to have it, we had to have a start date.
Right. We had to have a start date. So the, the issue now is we've gone against the executive order. So, um, you know, Tallahassee I'm sure is not happy with us. We went against the executive order because we are starting fully online. There's no brick and mortar option at all. And so that poses other issues because while they say they're going to be flexible and allow us to do what our community needs us to do, I'm not certain that they have committed in writing that we are going to be paid for the four weeks that we're going to be online. It is difficult to calculate seat time. It's part of the reason that we purchased and are moving a lot of our students onto Ingenuity because it allows us to, as a platform in which students sign on and, and do their, their work through that program. It allows us to track seat time because the state's going to be not, they were very flexible in, in the last quarter of last year. And I don't believe they're going to be that flexible in this quarter. They're going to want to see student achievement. They're holding us to assessments. They're holding us to student achievement. So they're expecting districts to continue to educate the population regardless of what is happening, which I don't know that I agree with that, but I don't have the authority to change it either. So we've got to comply in some way. So, you know, yesterday, when, when we, the proposal came forward from a board member to move to e-learning for the first four weeks, we had the ability to do that, but there's not a whole lot else we can do. Again, the superintendent has got to implement these plans or these ideas. Because e-learning was part of our plan, we have brick and mortar, e-learning, and then virtual are two virtual options. I believe that we, the attorney felt we could say, we're only going to do a portion of this plan and we're going to delay the implementation of the rest of the plan. So, but I don't know if everyone caught also, at the very end of the meeting, the superintendent, after much deliberation, the superintendent said, if the numbers come down to a reasonable amount, and we did not agree what that was. You know, my opinion, we should have said, when the numbers get to here, then the superintendent can come back with a different.
A measurable number.
A measurable number, but we didn't do that. We, I, I feel like at some point, in some points, we were, we missed a couple of things. And we may discuss those on the 25th. We have a meeting on the 25th and then another meeting on the 8th. But that's one of the things that didn't get discussed yesterday. The cost of opening didn't get discussed. The cost of staying closed didn't get discussed. It's going to cost us roughly, they're estimating five to seven million dollars a month to open and actually clean and, and take care of all of the things that they say we're going to need to reopen. But it's going to cost us on the backside to close as well. It's going to cost us employees and, and employees are going to probably get furloughed or laid off. We, we are not going to, you know, for four weeks, we're not going to need bus drivers or student nutrition. Not at the level that we normally would. We're not going to need administrators. We're not going to be.
On the level of, of not needing bus drivers and, and, and just at that level, student nutrition services, well, we'll still use some of those. But we're not going to need everybody. Bus drivers, we'll still use some, but not everybody. You know, the restaurant industry, I'm still very ingrained in the restaurant industry. We are going through the same thing. They shut us down. Our, our industry is in peril right now. We're, we're struggling. But now that we're reopening, we're having trouble getting employees back because the, the federal funding, the federal, you know, assistance is, is in some.
Greater than what they make.
Than they're making. Is that going to be a challenge with us moving forward?
It is. It is. If our, if our bus drivers and our custodians and student nutrition are collecting the, the amount of money that, that I know my, my children collected on, on those, on those. Why would you go back to work when you're going to make less on, you know, and, and we can't afford to pay what the federal government is paying them right now. Now that will run out. The state money will run out and the federal money will run out and they'll eventually. But the other issue is how many people are we going to lose in the process? We were already short bus drivers. We are already short pair of professionals. We're already.
That's been, that's been for years.
For years. So if we then start to lose people to other professions or other work that they can do to supplement their income, will they come back? And so I'm fearful of that. The economic impact on this community is going to be huge. I think we're starting to see some of that, but as things start to reopen, as government agencies start to reopen, including the courts and, and the county government, and they start to process some of the fines and, and and, and things that are going to come, you know, eviction notices and those type things. I think you're going to see a healthy number of people who are really struggling in this community. And so as the largest employer, I think we need to think about some of those things before we make some of these decisions. Again, I said yesterday, if I had it my way, we would have developed a hybrid plan that allowed people who wanted to e-learn to e-learn and allowed the people who wanted to come back. If we could have done it safely, we have, still are not providing for the most vulnerable marginalized kids in this community. And we haven't for a long time, but now we've just made the situation worse. Children who are on the verge of homelessness could be homeless, children who don't eat every day. Our summer feeding programs are nowhere near what our regular feeding programs are. Now four weeks, we're going to have to figure out how we get food to those kids every day. And we did it in the spring, but it was difficult. You, it was very difficult to, to manage. And, and then, for example, high school students, it was challenging for the district. I know. If I have a, if I have a student who takes culinary and my culinary teacher is coded red and can't come into the building and can only e-learn, do I not offer culinary to on-campus students? I mean, how does that work? So there were a lot of challenges that I think mostly high school, middle school, elementary, I think could have gotten it down. But my middle and high school were really challenged with trying to put master schedules together and trying to fluctuate. But I think they're going to be challenged in four weeks, in eight weeks, as we go back. I think they're going to be challenged. They're going to be challenged to find devices for every single one of these kids. We're not a one-to-one ratio district. We do not have enough devices for every kid.
Your brain, your brain goes so fast. Your brain goes so fast.
I've been talking about this for too long.
And I'm hanging on.
We don't have Wi-Fi connectivity for all these kids.
I'm hanging on every word, but we, again, you gotta remember, you know, we're talking about the booties who want to understand this. But last night we're watching marrying millions. So, uh, so let's go back to, you, you hit something. You, you know, you hit on something that a lot of people don't truly realize. You know, the booties do understand this because through the Voodoo Chef Foundation, we go in and we try to feed those underserved children, those children who live in food deserts. And, and people don't realize how many of our students actually rely on us for food. I know, uh, it saddened me the more and more I learned about this, about the numbers and how large they were. And it's part of what drove us to add that to our foundation and our mission. That, that's going to be, that's going to hurt and impact a lot of people. And as we.
And you know, you know, Eric, just from being in a school, those are the reported numbers. So our free and reduced numbers are the number of kids who actually fill out the form, turn it in and actually get that a lot. When you get to middle and high school, those numbers drop because kids don't ask and they, their parents don't fill out the paperwork. So you could have students who are struggling, who you don't even know aren't eating or, and so sometimes, you know, the free and reduced lunch program is fantastic, but sometimes we have kids who we know are struggling to make ends meet over the weekends or on holiday weeks. Those are the worst times for some of these kids and especially high school. It's difficult for high school kids to say, you know, to anyone, I need.
Well, because. Their peers, their buddies are going to make fun of them and, and.
Right. So there's, I, I believe the free and reduced need in this community is actually much greater.
Absolutely.
In our numbers in this, in this. And that, to me, that's apparent as we work through our, our partnership with Feeding Tampa Bay and starting to put pantries in schools. And I watch a pantry in my neighborhood that is every single week crowded with people. And it's not people who are homeless. It is people who are living paycheck to paycheck or people who, yesterday my tire flew out of my car and now I can't afford to buy food for the rest of the month. My, back to school. My, uh, back to school supplies is a huge burden on some families. Medication for the elderly is a huge burden on families. So those kind of things, I, I don't think we realize how great the need is. And your foundation has tapped into that a little bit.
Little bit.
When you go in, when you go in and do that, but the food pantries too, again, another thing that our kids are missing out on this because they're not at school and there's not a safe place for them to, or their family to come and get groceries as if they were, and not just a bag of food. I mean, there's a difference between being able to walk into a pantry and shop for what you know you can cook and you know your children will eat and you desire versus getting a bag of canned goods or a bag of food that your family may eat half of or not know what to do with. So, um, it, it's, it's a, it's an issue. Um, and, and we could have opened some of that back up, but now we're stuck in this place where we're only doing e-learning and I suspect that they will, that will get extended.
Now, you're, you're at a much different level. You're throwing out numbers of, of budget, budgetary numbers of five, that five million, seven million required to keep the school in operation. Um, you know, my brother says all the time, he works for a, a high dollar company and he's like, it's all relative. It's all relative. Percentages are percentages. But I'm going to tell you right now, when you start throwing out those numbers, people don't realize the size of our district, the enormity of our, our business operations. We're not just a public school. Public school still is a business. It has to run as a business. It has a budget. We have dollars. We have to maintain those numbers and to be able to do these things. Um, people don't understand all that. They understand my child in a seat or my child not in the seat. Any change we make, uh, whether it be March 13th or eight, seven today, it doesn't happen overnight. It's a long, slow turn because of the size of our operation. Uh, but yet this is the society today. We want this and we want it now. Um, with these orders coming down and us having deadlines, to pivot into the model that was suggested, the options, which I gotta tell you, I love. Let the parents decide where their children are going to be and what's best for them and their family. You may not agree with that, but I thought as an outsider, not on the board, not looking at everything you look at. I don't have your, your mile high data. I've got my baseline. I thought it was a smart thing, but even that, to turn and make that adjustment, we wouldn't have been able to, to, to turn it that fast, would we?
No, it's very hard to implement. I think we're starting to see a little bit of that and, and people are starting to realize how, how difficult it is. So the district has, you know, a standard operating procedure and a way of work in which we do things and in which we open schools. And we have just, you know, heaped a whole bunch of, a whole litany of logistical things that people have to now do in order to comply with COVID, between the masks and social distancing and the hand washing and the cleaning. And for people to just get used to that, um, in reporting illness, I mean, that, that, those are things that, um, you know, people are, people are struggling to just implement that. And then on top of that to, a, and, and again, always brought back is teachers so far. That's, that's it. I mean, teachers are just the, are the first line of trying to figure out, how do you serve? You know, our PTAs usually do, you know, teacher lunches when you first come back. How do you do that safely and not, you know, so teachers have kind of been in the middle of the last week. How do you make things happen? We have been shut down since March. People are complaining about air conditioning is not working. Well, some of them probably haven't been turned on since March. I mean, limited access to having all those kids on campus. I remember a while back, um, our transportation team telling me, if we could just keep running for the whole year and not do this shutdown and start again, we would be so much better because people get out of their routine and you do it. I mean, think about traffic. You do it when you're driving. Everyone knows that summer traffic is no brainer to get downtown from anywhere. But come the first beginning of school, it completely changes. But if we could just all stay in a mindset of school is in session and we're going to travel that way through this district, but we don't, we get lazy, we, we take 10 minutes off our drive time because we don't have to, because it's not, it's summer. Who buses aren't running? 90,000 kids aren't on the road, um, you know, being bussed around. So we, we, we have gotten out of that mindset and so we're trying to keep all these new procedures and logistics on people. On top of on parents, we've made significant technology changes, um, for the district, all for the better, but they're big. I mean, to change our student platform in which we do this is huge. Um, and this district is massive and trying to get that many people on one platform and teach them how it works.
Right.
It's a steep climb and it's going to take us some time to get there. Both parents have to learn how to help their children. Students have to learn and teachers are learning ahead of all of them. So.
You know, a lot of us only have our own personal experiences to relate to. So a lot of times when people are talking to me about the situations, I hear a lot of I, 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 and that's okay. But you have to be open and receptive to listen and understand. Um, when you, when we're talking about the, the size of our district, um, you know, I do, I do some restaurant consulting and I have a lot of my chef buddies out there. You know, Hula Bay, a one restaurant, single stop shop, were able to put in their social distancing, uh, guidelines. Were able to manage the employees, were able to manage the, the bar shutdown and then the 50% comeback. And they're a one-stop shop and they were able to create a plan and manage that. On a different level, one of my chef buddies works for a corporate restaurant that has over 300 units in all different states with all different opening plans, all different procedures. You know, if my buddy were to look at me from Hula Bay and say, well, why can't they open? We did it. Well, they have 300 stores with 300 different policies and of the state and everything. The school district has that vastness of, of spread like a chain restaurant would. And we have all different needs at all different schools from age groups to learning styles, to, uh, the different types of centers we run. I don't really think people understand the, the complexity of what it takes to be part of the school district leadership in Hillsborough County, Florida. And, and it goes back to me just wanting to say thank you to everybody uh, for being as calm, as patient, as, as dedicated as you are on the board, on the entire leadership team. Um, and I, I wish everybody out there would be able to accept that and, and show some gratitude.
Well, I want, I think too, and I appreciate you, um, you know, asking me to come on today and talk about this. I want people to understand too, that, um, I was never opposed to e-learning. I'm just, I'm opposed to only having one option. And so I voted down that motion because it was the only thing being offered. Um, and that's just my stance on it. I, I knew the motion was going to pass. I could have withdrawn my vote and changed and went with the rest of the board, knowing it was going to pass. But, um, I think that I needed to state for the record that I have constituents who wanted to go back. I have families who need to go back. I have.
So, so right there, if it, just real quick, I don't mean to cut you off, but fifth, now this is from Bay News 9. Um, I don't have the school district stats and I, you know, I'm not trying to quote that. From Bay News 9, there were 115,000 surveys returned. 56,488 said they wanted face to face.
Right.
48,410 said they wanted to start e-learning. The people who wanted e-learning had the option, but now we've taken away the option from those who wanted something else. And, you know, I'm okay for the people who want e-learning. I really am. Um, I support, support you and support that.
Right. Well, I think part of the problem too, what happened Eric is like, I'll use the hurricane example again. So when a hurricane is headed towards Tampa, do we ask 26,000 people what they want to do? We don't.
No.
We shut our schools. And when it's time to reopen and the hurricane has passed, do we ask 26,000 people if they're ready to come back? I don't call Eric Young and say, hey, you ready to come back to work? Is it renting at your house?
Yes, she does. She, she called me.
We don't. We say, we've cleaned our buildings. We've cleaned our buildings. We made sure that everything is safe for children and students and teachers to come back and we reopen. We don't check with other counties. We don't check with the state. We do what's best for Hillsborough County. We also sometimes get handcuffed in that because other counties use our buildings. But it's, it's, we asked people what they wanted and then now we can't provide. And so people are upset by that and they should be. We should probably have never asked, what do you want to do? Because we asked teachers and we asked families and we haven't been able to provide what they want. And so now they're upset.
We did ask them what they wanted, Cindy.
I know.
We did. Uh, matter of fact, I got my mail-in ballot not too long ago and it said, what do I want? And I said, I want Cindy Stewart to represent me. And because of that, I should stand behind her and tell her how I feel, but support her no matter what her decision is. And you did ask me, it, it's called the democratic system and I voted and, and I will support you as long as you're out there. So.
I love you, Eric.
It's the, it's the truth and, and, um.
It's not an easy place to be. We're in a really, really.
It's real hard for me not to get on my soapbox here.
I know. It, it's a difficult place to be, but at the end of the day, I, you know, I don't think this is going away. I think there's going to be still difficult decisions to be made well into November and December. Um, and people just are going to have to be flexible. They're just going to have to not depend on daily the district having these concrete plans. I think that things could change at, at any moment and we're going to have to be prepared for some of that stuff. We're in very uncharted waters. And again, um, I, I'm seeing across the nation, my colleagues struggling with similar stuff. And, um, and we're talking a lot. We get on calls that are supposed to be about something completely different and we end up talking about this. How is your state handling it? What has your governor said? What has your department of education said? What resources? I mean, we really are talking about resources across the nation, like what is it that your state is doing to help kids and to help families deal with the things that they're dealing with? Um, so some good ideas coming out of some of that, but it's a different world right now. And I think all businesses, all government agencies, all school districts are all going to have to think outside the box and be creative. And I just wish we weren't so handcuffed sometimes around that creativity, um, because it's necessary. It's necessary for us to be able to, to provide for those kids.
And, and, uh, in my opinion, nobody else's, uh, we should show up for the students every day. I made a post where I stated that when I worked in industry, if I didn't like the restaurant I was at, I found a new restaurant. If I didn't like the chef I was working for, I found a new restaurant. Um, and, and I quite pointedly said, if you don't like where you work, find a new job. And it ruffled a lot of feathers because, uh, people said, well, this is our job. This is what we are trained to do. Okay, I understand that. Then do it. I mean, I'm not saying do it at, you know, well, I'm not going to do it at the cost of my own life. Um, nobody said that. Nobody said that. And nobody expects that. But, but I think we need to get back to work and I think we need to put kids in front of people. Um, or else we're going to be facing some other challenges that, that we're really not going to be able to handle. We don't have the, we don't have the personnel to handle the challenges we're going to face. And my opinion and, uh, I'm not going to get on my soapbox, but, uh, I would like to ask you a few questions. You don't have to tell me, you can tell me. I don't want to answer. Um, it's okay. Our funding is based on see bodies in chairs in front of teachers. Um, as an educator, I'm concerned if we're not putting bodies in chairs.
You should.
Um, because if we're not putting bodies in chairs, we're not going to get funding. And teachers may or may not realize the reality of this, but we see it every year when they do our, when we do our count, our load counts.
What do you count?
And, you know, you're, you're either at a unit or you cut a unit and then teachers go into the pool. And then they're given the opportunity to find another job in the district.
Well, I think you're, what you're going to see here too is true competition, um, because the charter, the charter schools are going to open.
Yep.
The private schools.
Private schools.
And all the other options that are out there for students, whether it's online or virtual or some other specialized program. Um, we are already saw just in our intense surveys, students who chose virtual, um, or something else. There's, there's already a pretty big loss there. Um, our growth last year was strictly in charter. We did not have a huge growth number in our traditional schools. So, you know, people talk about they want options and they want choice, but it is also going to come with some loss. Um, so my suspicion is that, you know, people who really want to put their kids back in a, a brick and mortar environment are going to find a way. Um, I had a couple of people contact me the other day and say, what do you know about this school? I'm thinking about changing, moving my kids over. They've got seats and if I can manage to do it, um, I'm going to do it. I had a, a guidance counselor yesterday tell me she was talking about taking leave. She wants to go back so badly. Um, but her son does not want to do e-learning. He does not, did not do well with e-learning. She's worried about it. Um, so she's looking at, how can I take leave and put, potentially put my kid in, in private school? So I think there's going to be loss on that and, and that's a shame, um, because I think that public schools provide, you know, the public system provides the best education and, and the most opportunity. Um, I'm not saying there's not, there's room for, and places for private and charter to be. Um, but as far as services and what we provide, no, nobody really comes close to what we provide. And I always warn people when they go to a different system, just make sure that, that you're getting everything you need because the public system provides all of that for you. And, and some people are very happy leaving and going to another system and that's fine. But I just think we're going to have some loss there. Um, and I think it's confusing for people too. I think e-learning versus virtual is very confusing and what is the difference? Um, e-learning means my teacher, Eric Young, who I used to see at my high school, is now going to be teaching me like this. Virtual is very different. When you, when you take a virtual, this make a virtual decision, you are pulling your child, withdrawing your child from a traditional school and moving them to a different school. The virtual schools, they act like it's a separate school. Um, it's not dual enrollment. It's not that. It, I mean, that's a whole different animal. So I think there's some confusion in some communities too, about what e-learning is going to be and what virtual is. Um, virtual, you don't sit in front of a computer all day long or you don't have to. You do the work, check in with the teacher occasionally. If you need help, you get help from the teacher. It's a very self-paced class. E-learning is not that. E-learning is this is going to be happening for six or seven hours a day with me in front of my teachers, depending on what grade level I'm in. So that poses a lot of issues for a lot of students. Um, I don't want to sit in front of a computer for seven hours a day.
They can't sit in our chair for seven hours when they're in our classrooms. We have to modify activity. We have to change activity. We have to curve. We have to change our teaching style. And I'm going to tell you, in the classroom, I see teachers struggle with it. And I said this at the beginning, you want to pull my teacher records, pull them. It's public record. You want to see my accolades as an instructor, Google me. But I see teachers in our district who struggle with just that. Um, being able to keep kids attentive for the time in the classroom. Now you're going to be looking at a computer screen, watching a kid in a chair.
We had, we had 6,000 kids in the fall, in the spring that did not report in at all.
6,000 in the spring. How many students in our district?
212. That's a lot. That's, to me, that's a lot of kids that are, that are, did not report in. Um, our, our.
When you say report in, that means not at all.
Well, they were only, they only, you had to report in, in the spring, you only had to report in one time in order to be counted, counted present for the entire week. So one time, yes, one time. You had to log in and make contact with a teacher one time in order to be counted present for the whole week. So, but still 6,000 of them could not even do that. So I, I'm fearful that those numbers are going to grow. And then the other piece is we're starting to see the numbers in our, you know, at the Department of Juvenile Justice swing in the wrong direction because.
Right.
Kids are out there with not a lot to do. Um, and I'm afraid that. And I'm afraid that a system that we've worked and I sit on a board that works very hard on that, two boards actually, we're going to see an uptick in those numbers because kids are home, they're starting to get bored. I mean, they've been home since March and they can't go anywhere and they can't do anything. And short of sitting on a computer playing with, beer games with their friends, they're starting to get antsy. And, and so we're starting to see kids get into some trouble that we don't ever want them to get in. And if they were in school, they wouldn't be in those, in those situations. One situation away from a bad decision.
I, I think the effective, the effectiveness of what we're getting to, into isn't going to, isn't going to be what we think. I, I hear all the challenges you're talking about, about students being home and, and that, that is an issue as well. Do we even want to get into, you know, parents going back to work and their kids being home and, and all of that stuff? The challenges are going to be on some, we can't measure them and we have no idea. But we do know what, we, we know how bad they are with students in school. You know, we have data. You mentioned e-learning, having the teacher in front of you for six hours a day. I'm talking about, you know, student, teachers leave, students leaving. You, you mentioned charter school. We talked about private school. As our numbers go down, that means the need for instructors go down. That means we're going to probably see layoffs, furloughs, whatever you want to call them. And I don't know this to be true, but word on the street is if I'm brick and mortar, there's legislation that says it's 25 to one. If I'm e-learning, there's no legislation. I might have 30, 40, 50 students in a class.
Well, it's just another good question that has not been clarified through the state, through the Department of Education about whether or not class size amendment is going to be adhered to for those who are e-learning. You're not in front of those kids, but you still have the same challenges in grading and testing and those kind of things. But I don't know if districts will push on that class size amendment law and say, well, as a teacher, they can instruct, you know, 50 kids in a classroom as, as easily as they can. You know, I think that unfortunately, I think the union would fight that pretty hard. But again, you know, when you're looking at potentially a teacher shortage and now you've got, you know, you've got to educate kids. That could be, I don't think, the, the, when that law came into effect, I don't think anyone realized the cost that, that everyone wanted, you know, one to 18 for elementary and one to 22 and one to 25. And I don't think people realized, and we still work off a school average, so we're not so much in that. But I don't think people realize the number of teachers we had to hire in order to get underneath that. And a lot of districts didn't do it. A lot of districts just said, we can't do this. We can't afford to do it. We can't hire these teachers. And so they just took the penalties. And, and didn't, never got to class size. Now, where, whether or not the state or a district would push on that and say, you know, what are you going to do when you? I mean, they do it when they have to split up classes and you have somebody out, you know, if someone out sick. And I don't know, substituting is going to be very interesting for e-learning too. I mean, what happens when a teacher is sick and can't, we're going to have a sub then be doing Zoom calls with a teacher?
They're going to play a video. That was a joke.
Happens.
I know. I know. So, you know, I don't think everybody fully understands the challenges holistically. And, and I want to apologize on behalf of, of instructors. Not everybody's going to agree with me on this. You know, you and I met when I was at Chamberlain. You were a huge supporter of everything we did there. You're a huge supporter of everything we do outside of the building as we're doing right for kids. And the way that some of the messages are being conveyed, you know, I want to apologize. You know, it's totally, it's totally not cool. I don't want to say it's unprofessional because I've got a bandana on. I've got earrings in my ears. We all know some of my favorite kitchen language. And, and some people are going to say that about me. But one thing I will say, and I think you would agree, is that I would never be disrespectful. I would always take other people's feelings into account. And, and that's what being a professional is, being able to have a conversation, communicate in a way where all points are heard, understood, and we make decisions and respect each other moving forward. And I don't know that some of my colleagues and peers are doing that. I've read a couple of posts today from some of my peers. And I want to apologize to you, the other board members and all the staff for that. You should not have to deal with that. And unfortunately, in the role that you have chosen to, to do, it, it comes your way. But I don't think it's cool. On behalf of people who think like me, please accept that apology.
Well, I do and I appreciate it. And, you know, I think it's something that we are used to dealing with. And I just think right now in the time we're living and things are just so uncertain. And they're looking, people are looking for, for certainties that we really can't give them. And so, you know, it is what it is. I, you said it best. People elect you to make decisions. And it, I struggle too when people decide that one decision I make that they don't like, that they turn on me and, and knowing exactly who I am for a very long time. So I mean, not even asking. I mean, I'm happy to answer questions or to talk to people about why I make the decisions that I do. And sometimes other information comes my way or other people say things that make me go, you know what? I really need to think about this a little bit differently. And that's what being elected official is. We have to look at all information. And sometimes we make decisions without enough information because that's all we have. So it, it's hard, it's, it's easy for people to sit behind a keyboard and say things. But honestly, I'm easy to find. You're, and you're absolutely right. I answer the phone. I answer text messages. I'm happy to communicate with people, but I struggle with people who are attacking and don't take the time to really think about or ask me what my opinion is or why I made the decision. And we don't have to agree, but a healthy, respectful, honest conversation doesn't have to end in agreement. It doesn't have to end in, in, in the ugliness that some people are putting out there. So, and I think it's just, again, too, people are frustrated. This is a really trying time. It's a really trying thing on people and we're all trying to do the best that we can. And I just think people need to remember to, to, to stop for a second and be kind and remember that I could be their mother, I could be their sister, I could be their wife or, or friend. And you wouldn't do that to those people in your life. So, you know, take a, take a step back and think about what you're saying before you go out and attack people. Again, we, we walked away from that board meeting last night and I guarantee you, every single board member, even though we didn't vote the same, which we should never all be voting the same. It is a rare occasion that we don't vote 100% 7-0. It's very rare. And for people who are connected to the school district, 99% of the time, that board votes to support our superintendent and everything he brings forward. And when we don't, we all know and recognize it is the board's decision. Nobody goes out and says, well, Cindy Stewart didn't vote for that and so and so did.
You mean when you, you mean when you guys go behind the curtain? You don't go into separate corners and your trainers are there going, come on, you got this?
We don't. We understand that it's, it's a majority rule and the board voted and it's over. And we leave it there. We've gotten, we've gotten really good at leaving it there and walking away and saying, the majority ruled, we will now stand, I will stand behind the superintendent and do anything he needs from me to do to make sure that his four weeks of e-learning that the board voted to put in place is successful. And that's my job as a board member.
Even though you, even though you voted against it.
Even though I voted against it.
Because that's.
I don't agree.
Because that's how we should be. We made, we, we elected you. You're part of that board that other people elected. The decision was made. Let's go with it. And I even said in my rant, this is how I feel. But I'm going to go with whatever decisions are made because I'm a professional. That's what you do. If you don't want to do it, find someplace else to work. It's that simple.
But I just want people to, to know that the board didn't walk away angry at two board members yesterday. And I didn't walk away angry at my colleagues. I understand their position. Believe me, I could have, I, I can see both sides of this. I really can. And I think we all could. And I think that even though I knew where this was going to go, I knew this was going to go to e-learning. I had to stand up for my constituents. We did want that. And for my, my kids in my district who don't have what they need. So, and I'm okay with that. I mean, I, I wish we could have done something different, but again, we're very handcuffed by the state right now. Funding is, is a handcuff to us as well. So, I mean, again, I just don't want people to think that the board is now infighting over this decision. We're not. We, in fact, we went in the back, we had ordered lunch because we thought we were going to be there later and talked about what had happened at the day and that was perfectly fine because the vote was over. But we discussed now getting behind the superintendent and helping him implement a plan and making sure that people are on board and this doesn't become a more contentious issue. And revisiting it. I know a lot of people are concerned about our revisiting it on September 8th and what we're going to do then. And I said, well, we can't just live in a bubble and not revisit the whole scenario. I mean, we have to continue being flexible. You have a time period now, a chunk of time period that you're going to e-learn. And two weeks prior to the end of that, we're going to have another conversation about what things are looking like and make another decision about how long this goes. So again, I think it's, I agree with Ms. Schamberger, this is a community problem. This is not just school district. I don't know that the community is going to step up and do what she asked, which is start opening their doors and allowing for children to come in. And I, I don't know that they're going to do that.
Do we have the infrastructure to do that? Are there enough of those places? And then.
There's not. So the haves and the have-nots will happen again.
Pay to play.
I passed on my way home, a, a church that has put up this huge e-learning camp, four weeks of e-learning camp. So they're going to accept children in with their devices and wifi so that they can just monitor children. They're not going to teach.
Are they charging?
Oh, I'm sure they are.
Now, now, let, let's talk about entrepreneurship 101. Do you think they're going to limit the number of people they're going to take? Do you think they're going to six foot social distance?
We have no control over it. So.
We don't. We don't. But if they were in our school, we would have worked hard to make sure that happened. Just saying. And I want to clarify myself. You did not vote against e-learning. You voted against not having options. And you made that clear and I, I improperly stated it when I said it and you corrected me on the first go. I want to make sure that you know I understand that and I'm not trying to sell something.
I've been correcting it all day.
You did not say, you voted against the plan to go to e-learning because it did not have options, which your constituents wanted, which is what I wanted. And, and I thank you. I could do this all night because I just want the information. And a lot of times when I see you out in off-hours, we're still doing this because I want the information. And I appreciate that you always give it to me. You are open and available to everybody, not just those in your district. You even this morning told me, if they want to talk to me, just give them my cell phone number. And, you know, that is a true public official, a true public servant. And I thank you for that. Not just for me, for our community. Anything you want to close with?
No, I mean, I'm, I'm 10 days out from an election. I'm, I'm leaving the school district and, and that's sad on one side, but I'm really excited where I'm, where I'm going. So we are 10 days from election day and I want people to know too that this election, everyone votes in this election. You will see my name on every single ballot, every single primary ballot. And this election will be decided in the primary. There is no general election for this. Unfortunately, there's not a Republican. So there are two Democrats and we are at the top of the ballot. And, and I'll be moving from school district down the street six blocks to the clerk's office to take my experience as, as the sitting school board member for eight years down to the clerk's office. So, but it's really important that people vote in the primary, whether they vote by mail or whether they get out to a polling place. There's a lot of races that will be decided in the primary. And, and I know I've had this conversation with you before, school board races are extremely important, as you can see. And a lot of those races will be decided in the primaries as well. There are four open seats that will be decided in the primary most likely. And, and primaries, school board ends up way down on the ballot. But I think our community has seen, our community has seen how important schools are and how important school board leadership is to a community. And we don't always get the credit that we deserve for the work that's happening, but we are the largest employer in this community. And we carry a budget as, as grand as the county commission. And they're number two as an employer, but they, they know that once we start doing things, then they will have to fall in line behind us. So, you know, it's an important role. And again, you have four seats up, including my seat for District 3. I'm not endorsing anyone's campaigns. I'm not even, you know, Steve Kona is up for reelection. And Tammy Schamberger is up for reelection. So it's, it's going to be, it's going to be a tough year. And, and then transitioning new board members in potentially in November, in the middle of all this.
Yeah, with a new superintendent.
Imagine, you know, when you become a new board member for the seventh largest district in the nation, you drink from a fire hose for about a clear year. That is just constant information coming at you and trying to understand the logistics of your role and how things work. So I can't imagine being a brand new board member. And there will be at least one brand new board member up there in November for my seat. So.
When's your last day?
I actually get to finish out my term. So my election is over on August 18th. But the clerk's office doesn't get seated and sworn in until January. So I'm able to continue until November, until the person who replaces me comes in. So I'll be there through November, helping them make these decisions, but after that, it'll be a new board member there.
And, and I just want to say, I just want to say, if Cindy was going to lame duck, that would have happened a long time ago. Because all projections have her as a clear cut winner. And if, if anybody out there thinks she's making political moves right now, you are sadly mistaken. The, the community knows her value and what she's worth and, and, and it's a done deal. So she's not going to lame duck. That's not her style. That's not her character. And if anybody out there is calling that out, you're, you're wrong. And if you have a problem with it, hit me up off the podcast. Well, conversation. Everybody knows I'm not shy about that. You're going to be sorely missed. Thank God.
I want to come and cook again. Can I, if we get back reopened, I want to come and cook with you again.
You want to be the celebrity, celebrity cooker?
And not have you break glass in my food.
Oh, that was hysterical, wasn't it?
It was not hysterical.
I got, man, the stories we could tell.
That was fun. Those are fun nights and those are, and those are all about scholarships for kids. And so.
You know, you should put together a golf team and come out to the Voodoo Chef charity golf tournament where we raise money for our foundation. It's on November 7th. Get, get a team of board members to come out with you. I don't know if that's going to break some sunshine laws or shit. Bring the attorney. Who cares?
Hey, as long as we notice it, if the, if a reporter wants to come and golf with us, then she's welcome.
Oh, we, I'm sure we could hook that up. We'll get, we'll get Lee Span on your team. How about that? Hey, I appreciate.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much for doing this and thank you to all the Voodies out there. I'm hoping, I'm still hoping we're going to have Gasparilla this year.
Hey, well, I, it's, it's in the plans. It's in the works. Applications have gone out. Do me a favor, no matter what.
I just paid my crew dues too. I know.
Well, I'm sorry you did that. I'm kidding. I'm kidding. I do need a personal favor and I need your promise. You are a Voodoo, but you got to promise, you know, after you get this new, new job as the clerk of the court and all that stuff, promise me you're not going to flip flop on me and sell me down the road, huh?
How would I do that?
I don't know. Hey, I appreciate you.
I need, I need sauces and, and, and I need stuff.
Hit me up.
Yeah, I, I want to come cook. We had fun that, we have had fun a couple, a couple of times. Sometimes I'd be on the receiving end of eating and a couple of times you've made me be on the chef's side.
Well, either way you want to play, we're down like a clown. We love having you and we love your support. So. I appreciate you. Be safe, okay? And thank you for all you do.
Have a good one.
All right, Voodies, how cool was that? I got to tell you, I promised I'd be nice. I promised I would not get on my soapbox, but, you know, Cindy. I promised I would not get on my soapbox, but, uh, you know, Cindy Stewart's class act, she is about supporting students, about supporting the community and keeping, uh, the best interest of everything at hand. I'll, I'll be nice. I'll stay off my soapbox. Cindy Stewart, thank you for supporting, uh, students. Thank you for supporting the Voodoo Chef, the Voodoo Chef Foundation. Thank you for being a voodoo. And, uh, we'll see you when you're the clerk.
And there you have it, voodies, another episode of the Voodoo Chef Podcast. Let's give a big shout out to everyone involved with Voodoo Chef and all things voodoo, starting with Woostoff Knives, the official knife of the Voodoo Chef. And jamming up and down the streets of all Ybor City and Tampa Bay ragged old souls. Thanks for letting me jam with you guys. And when those amps are cranking, the turntables are definitely spinning, thanks to the official DJ of the Voodoo Chef, DJ Don Pablo. Check him out spinning all across town, most importantly, at all Voodoo Chef events. Speaking of events, getting ready for yours? Check out Voodoo Chef Catering, custom created events for every shape and size. Log on to vooduchefcatering.com to get your information today. A great big shout out to all my voodies that are in the Voodoo Crew. Thank you for your support. And of course, we could not do what we do in the crew without all of our crew sponsors. First watch, Chef Shane Shively, thank you for believing in our mission. And of course, we can't forget Voodoo Mortgage. For all your mortgage needs, check them out at voodumortgage.com. Alessi Bakery, a Tampa staple. Drop in and check them out today. And our newest sponsor, Twisted South Food Truck. Chef Adam Jessup, thank you for what you do. And of course, all things voodoo are in support of the Voodoo Chef Foundation, providing culinary scholarship and feeding those in need. To find out more information or make a donation yourself, log on to vooducheffoundation.com today.